Okay, class, so today we are, we are at the home stretch. So right now you see I am in the learning module ten, which is the final exam learning module. Just to make sure you're kinda up on it, right? You had eight chapters, really wasn't eight full chapters, but eight parts of chapters. Learning module nine was all of your competency checks. Your competency checks are within each chapter. But if you wanna just look at all of them at the same time, you could click on this link and this takes you to all of the competency checks at once, instead of trying to look at them one by one. Okay, in each learning module? So you wanna make sure you do all those. These are really good practice for your final exam. I am going to start off by going to the final exam thing, so I want us to review. Click on this. Okay, as you can see here, there are two links. One is for the review, one is for the real thing. The real final exam, you must take in a Valencia Testing Center. The sixteenth, I believe, is your last and final day to do so. Because the H2 classes start the very next day. And so I'm just double checking the date. I feel like I've said it a lot of times, but I just wanna make sure. Or is it the fifteenth? Let's just double check, right? Let's go to my calendar really quickly. I can see. Yes, H2 classes begin on Friday, so everyone must take their final by Thursday, the sixteenth. As far as carrying over, do you mean taking the zero zero twenty-eight class next, Tracy? Okay, I do not teach the zero zero twenty-eight class. I'm actually teaching a zero zero eighteen class again. So Ms. Barnett teaches the zero zero twenty-eight class and I will look it up really quick so you can see the CRN, cuz you do need to register for that on your own and make sure you get it paid for. I'm just gonna look up the CRN for you, I mean, look up the CRN for you really quick. It's Ms. Barnett. Oh, I answered it, okay. So yeah, you have to register for it. If it's full and you didn't register, email me and I will add you to the course myself. Okay? If it's full, I'm not, I'm gonna just see if it's full cuz I'm not really sure. Let's see. So it is showing up full, so one, seven, nine, six, five. If you want to be in that class that starts on Friday, go ahead and email me with your VAD and I will add you to the class myself. Okay, if you plan on passing this course, taking this class next is definitely a good idea. Get it over with and you can start in ten thirty-three, starting in the spring. Okay? Alright, so again, here's your review. You can take this as many times as you want to practice. The final exam, you can only take once. It is password protected. You cannot use a calculator and you must take the final exam in a Valencia Testing Center, which means you must have your Valencia ID. Okay? So we are gonna actually use the review to do some practice. The final exam is forty questions. So my goal today is to get through at least twenty of them, so that on Wednesday I can cover the other twenty. Maybe I cover a little more depending on how fast it goes. And it's just going a little slow, so just be patient. Okay. Okay, as you can see, there are forty questions when I scroll through, so I'm just gonna go ahead and start with the first one. Okay? And if you feel as though that's too easy or you want me to skip it, just say so and I will. So in this problem, I'm just gonna take a second to rewrite it. It is an order of operations problem. And so we know order of operations, I have to do parentheses first, then exponents, multiplication and division, addition and subtraction, whichever comes first from left to right. You can't forget that part. Okay, so in this one, as I work from left to right, I can see that I do have some parentheses that I can go to first. So I'm just gonna keep rewriting everything that I didn't use yet. Eight minus four is four and four is gonna be squared. So I'm done with parentheses. Next, I'm gonna deal with the exponents. Twelve divided by three plus four times four is sixteen, so I'm done with the exponent. The only thing I have left here is division and addition, so division comes before addition. So twelve divided by three is four, plus my sixteen equals twenty. So I will just type that in and yes, you're gonna have to type the answers in. Okay. It's gonna give me my score at the very, very end, okay? So don't be thrown off by that. You can re-attempt it, but you finalize at the end and it is a good idea. Attempt all of the questions before you finalize and then that way you can see exactly what you need to practice. Okay? So I'm gonna go to question number two. This one also is an order of operations problem. The difference is I have a numerator and a denominator, so I'm actually gonna work these out kinda separately, but kinda at the same time as well. Okay? So I can see in the numerator, I have five squared, which is twenty-five. There's a minus sign in the problem and then four squared, which is sixteen. You wanna make sure, you know, there's a big difference between this and this. Okay? This, since there is no parentheses, it's negative four times four, which ends up being a negative sixteen. Whereas this is negative four times negative four, which is a positive sixteen. So we had this one, which is why we still have a negative sixteen there. And then at the bottom, I have five minus four, which is one, and one is being squared, which we know is just one. Twenty-five minus sixteen gives me nine. Nine over one is just nine and then we will go ahead and type in the nine. Okay? Gonna erase all my drawings and again, if you guys have questions, just go ahead and chime in. This is determine the prime factorization. Prime factorization is when we break down a number using the factor tree into all prime numbers. And it does not matter what two numbers you start with, because at the end, we will all end up with the same list. So I'm gonna keep it pretty easy. I know that three hundred, two possible factors is a hundred and fifty times two, whereas two is already a prime number. One fifty, I can break it out into a couple of different things. I'm going to choose fifteen and ten. And fifteen and ten are not prime, so I can keep going. I get three and five. Now, these are prime numbers, so I'm gonna stop there and then I get two and five. And these are also prime numbers. So what I would do here is list them in order. I have a two right there. I got another two right there. I have a three and then I have two fives. And I can see here that it says use exponents for repeated factors. So that means I would have two squared times three times five squared. And it also says use a star in between, so let's try and type this in properly. I'm gonna have two up arrow, two star, three star, five up arrow, two. And then I'm gonna hit submit. Okay? Clear. Go to the next question. Okay, this one is choose the graph which corresponds to the inequality. I'm gonna change my color to something a little darker. Okay? So this is x is less than or equal to negative three. So first of all, the or equal to symbol means that my dot should be closed in. Okay, so less than or equal to, greater than or equal to, get a filled in dot. Regular less than and regular greater than get an open dot. You may also see parentheses or brackets instead. So in this case, I'm looking for a closed dot and I'm looking for my closed dot to be right on top of the negative three. So it can't be this one, it can't be this one, it could be this one or it could be this one, cuz those are both closed dots on top of the negative three. Since my x is less than or equal to, that means my arrow should be going that way. That means this is my final answer. So let me clear it out and select that answer and go to the next question. Okay? Here, it wants to know, is negative six less than, greater than, or equal to two? It is definitely less than. Type that in the box. Submit. Go to the next. As you can see, I'm getting through the test pretty quickly. Here, we're practicing our signs. Negative seven minus a negative one, this minus sign makes this minus sign a plus. So it's really negative seven plus one, which gives me a negative six. That one. Erase. Same thing here. Here, it's just multiplication. If you have a hard time remembering your multiplication when you're dealing with positives and negatives, this is a quick way to remember. This is a tic-tac-toe, so I'm gonna put P for positive in the winners diagonal and then I'm gonna use N for negative in all of the other spaces. And this is something you can just jot down on your scrap paper before you get started. And here I see I have a positive number multiplied by a negative number, so I know that a positive times a negative is a negative, so I'm gonna get a negative twenty-four here. So yes, I'm gonna type that in. I'm gonna submit. Okay, again, so multiplication tables with signs, this tic-tac-toe is really, really, really cool. It's easy to remember. Go to number eight. We got another order of operations. Here, I can see that I have division, multiplication, subtraction, and addition. And I'm just gonna work it from left to right and in this case, the division actually comes before the multiplication. So I'm gonna do the division first. So four divided by two is two, two, and then bring everything that I didn't use yet down. Two times six is twelve. Twelve minus seven is four. No, five. It's five. And then plus another five gives me ten. You guys got any questions yet? I'm just zipping through this. Okay, cool. Alright, just checking. Let's go to the next one. Okay, here, we have question number nine. What, what is the negative absolute value of fifteen? So essentially, what you're doing here is you're saying, okay, well, what is the absolute value of fifteen? It is fifteen and then when I bring down that minus sign, it's still a negative. If that minus sign was inside of the absolute value symbol, it would work out a little different, but it's not, it's on the outside, so it gets applied last. Another order of operations. So again, I'm just gonna rewrite this so I have some space. This is just all about keeping your work neat, taking your time, you know, not rushing through, because it's an easy problem, but easy to also make a mistake if you're not paying attention. So I'm gonna do what's inside the brackets first. Five plus a negative eleven is the same thing as saying five minus eleven, which is gonna give me a negative six. I'm gonna leave that inside the brackets and then I'm just gonna bring down everything else. I don't need to write this plus minus thirteen, I'm just gonna write minus thirteen. There's no point in me writing all those extra symbols. And really, this is just fourteen minus six minus thirteen. I don't, again, I don't need this plus minus scenario. Fourteen minus six is eight. Eight minus thirteen is a negative number, right? Because I'm gonna have eight good guys. That's three, four, five, six, seven, eight good guys and thirteen bad guys. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. All the paired up ones die, right? And I have this many bad guys, so I have negative five, okay? That's just, I call those the army men, just like I have the tic-tac-toe for multiplication and division. I have the army man for addition and subtraction, because the rules are different depending on which operation you're doing. Okay? Again, more order of operations, just a matter of taking your time. So I'm just gonna rewrite this so I have some space. And I'm gonna simplify a couple of things, because there's a lot of extra symbols here that I don't really need. Again, eleven, a negative eleven plus six, this time is negative five. Plus, and then in here, this is really five minus fifteen, which is a negative ten. And this plus minus eight is really just minus eight. Again, I don't need plus minus ten. This is just negative five minus ten minus eight. I get a negative fifteen minus eight. I'm gonna get a negative twenty-three. Okay? Let me clear that. This is pretty simple. This is just the exponent, so I talked about this earlier. Since the negative sign is inside the parentheses and the exponent is on the outside of parentheses, that means everything in here is getting the exponent. So I'm gonna write negative two four times and since it's even, I know I'm gonna end up with a positive, right? Okay? Nice. Alright. Let's see, we have, again, wants us to compare these two decimals. Wants to know if twelve point five zero eight is less than, greater than, or equal to twelve point five nine. And the thing you wanna do here is just compare the digits. I can see I have both, I have a twelve in both of them, so that doesn't help me. They both have a five in the tenth place, so it still matches. So I'm gonna go to the next place, which is the hundredth. I can see I have a zero in this one and a nine in this one. So this one is actually bigger, cuz twelve dollars and fifty cents, or almost fifty-one cents, is less than twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents. Okay, so that is a matter of comparing the digits. Okay? Round this decimal to the nearest hundredth. So first, you, you have to know your place values. So the three is in the tenth place, the eight is in the hundredth place. So the eight is the number I wanna round, so I'm gonna look to the right, which is a nine. Since the nine is five or greater, my eight is gonna go up, so I'm actually gonna get point three nine. And then everything after that number becomes zero, so that will be all that I write. I'm gonna submit that one. Here, we are doing decimal subtraction. So you wanna be careful, again, you're not using a calculator, so go ahead and rewrite this. First of all, this negative makes this negative a positive. So really, you have negative six point zero zero nine plus ten point five. Now, I know that it says add here, right? But since this number is negative and this number is positive, the sign, the numbers have different signs, that means in fact, I'm going to subtract. And since I'm subtracting by hand, I need to write the largest number first, okay? Which is why you see me writing it this way. Okay? So since I cannot take nine from nothing, I'm gonna go ahead and put zeros in this place so I can see what happens when I start to borrow and things like that. A little purple. So nine cannot come from zero, so I'm gonna borrow, but I can't borrow from zero. So I'm gonna come way over here to this five and make this a four, which then makes this zero a ten. But I still need to borrow here, so this ten becomes a nine and then this becomes ten. Now, I can say ten minus nine is one, nine minus zero is nine, four minus zero is four. Bring down my decimal, because whenever you add and subtract, you have to line up the decimals. And then ten minus six is just four, so I'm gonna get four point four nine one. And submit. Okay? Next one. Now, I'm dividing decimals. Again, it's a negative divided by a negative, so if you remember your tic-tac-toe. Okay? A negative divided by a negative is a positive, so I know whatever answer I get is gonna be a positive answer, so I can stop worrying about the signs. But then I have to actually do the division, so it's three point two four divided by point four. Now, if you remember, you cannot have a decimal on the outside, so I need to make this look like a whole number by moving my decimal place one time to the right. To be consistent, I have to, since I moved it here once, I have to also move it there. So my new problem actually ends up being four into thirty-two point four. So you can see my decimal moved, right? So then, what I wanna do, and this is just something I do, I go ahead and place my decimal in my answer right away, so I don't have to lose it or try to figure it out later. And then I just ask myself, how many times does four go into three? It does not go into three any times, which is why I put a zero on top of the three. How many times does four go into thirty-two? Well, it goes into thirty-two eight times, which is why the eight goes right above the two. You can see when I bring down the four, that goes once, I get a remainder of zero, which is fine. So my final answer will just be eight point one. Okay? Again, if you guys are checking your work with a calculator, that is fine, but if you're doing your work with a calculator, you are gonna have trouble. So now we have order of operations with decimals. So I can see I have addition, multiplication, and subtraction. So I'm gonna deal with the multiplication first, which is eleven point five times twelve. And when you're multiplying decimals, it's not as necessary to line them up. So I got two times five is ten, carry the one, two times one is two, plus the one is three, two times one is two again. One times five is five, make sure you indent one space. One times one is one and one times one is one. Add everything together. Got my decimal, which is one, so it's one thirty-eight. So now I have twelve point two plus one thirty-eight minus seven point seven. So now I'm just gonna keep working from left to right and this time, I'm gonna do twelve point two plus one thirty-eight. Okay? And when you're adding and subtracting, you do wanna keep everything lined up. Eight plus two is ten, carry the one, that's four, that's five, and that's one. So now I have one fifty point two minus seven point seven. So again, again, I'm just rewriting all the pieces by hand, so I'm gonna have one fifty point two minus seven point seven. And again, since I'm subtracting, you wanna make sure you line everything up. And we're gonna have to start borrowing, okay? So I cannot take seven from two, so I'm gonna come over to borrow, but I can't borrow from a zero. So again, let me change my color. This five is gonna become a four and this zero is gonna become a ten. Then the ten becomes a nine, so that my two can become twelve. So I'm gonna get a five here, bring down my decimal, I'm gonna get a two here, a one and a four. So my final answer will be one forty-two point five. Okay? I'm guessing there's no questions so far, since you guys are pretty quiet. Okay? That's cool. Let's move this over. Clear this. Go to the next one. This is more decimal work. This time I have some addition and subtraction as well as multiplication. So I'm going to get fourteen point four plus fifteen point three, which is twenty-nine point seven. So that's my answer, right, from that first part. And then, I'm gonna do the second part, which is seventeen point seven minus minus, what is it, fourteen point one, which is gonna be three point six. Now, I'm gonna multiply those two answers to get my final, final answer, which is twenty-nine point seven. I got one oh six point ninety-two. Let's do question nineteen. Sixty percent is equivalent to what simplified fraction? Okay, this is a good one. So sixty percent, we know, is a fraction of sixty over a hundred, because percent is always out of a hundred. Now, it did say simplified, so the first thing I would do is cross out these two zeros, because that'll leave me with just six over ten. And then I can say, well, six divided by two is three and ten divided by two is five and three over five is definitely a simplified fraction. I typically write my fractions with parentheses all the time, just because I wanna make sure it reads it properly. See number twenty here. This time, we have the decimal point zero four five is equivalent to what percent? When you're changing a decimal to a percent, you can just move your decimal twice, so that means that'd be forty-five percent. It says enter it without the percent symbol. You can see it already has a percent symbol there, so I would just write forty-five. Okay? Erase. I'm just gonna keep going, since I still have a little bit of time. This is one eighty-five is what percent of means to multiply three twenty? So you can see what I did here was I just translated this literally word for word. One forty-five is, whenever I don't know what something is, I use a letter. The word of means multiply and then three twenty. So now that it's an equation, really what this looks like is this. And how do you get x by itself? Well, you have to divide by three twenty, which means you're gonna end up simplifying. Okay? So I'm going to get three twenty divided by three twenty. So I get x equals one eighty-five divided by three twenty. Now, it's looking for a percent, which means I don't want a fraction. So I'm gonna take that fraction and turn it into a decimal. And one eighty-five divided by three twenty literally gives me this long number. Okay, this long decimal. So let's read some of these directions. Says round your answer to one decimal place. Okay, round my answer to one decimal place. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to round it here. Okay, and I'm gonna go back and check this, cuz now I'm curious, does it want me to round it after I've converted it or not? I'm gonna go with after, so let's change. So let's change this decimal to a percent, which means I would get fifty-seven point eight one. And since it says round to one decimal place, that would be the eight. The one is not big enough to change the eight, so I'm gonna go with fifty-seven point eight percent. So help me remember when we're done to go back to number twenty-one to make sure that it liked what I was doing, cuz I wanna make sure you guys understand the instructions that it's really asking for, okay? So this is gonna be fifty-seven point eight, and it already has the percent symbol. Okay. Let's clear this. And go to number twenty-two. Okay, Molly completed six tenths of her homework. And Max completed two fourths of his homework. Who completed the most homework? Let's see, they have choices for us to choose from. Okay, so the easiest way to compare these two fractions, because that's really what you're doing. There's two things, you can either give them both common denominators. And when they have common denominator, you can just compare the numerator, so let's talk about that for a second. So for instance, I can make them both have the denominator of twenty. This to become twenty had to be multiplied by two, so it'd become twelve. This would have to be multiplied by five, so that would become ten. So I can see that twelve is greater than ten. So six tenths is greater than two fourths, okay? So I would actually pick the drop-down arrow that says greater than. Now, what else you could've done is converted six tenths to a decimal, which is point six, and two fourths is the same thing as one half, which is point five, and again, you would still get point six is greater than point five. So again, comparing fractions is giving it the same denominator or converting them to decimals. Both will give you the same answer. Okay, I'm gonna hit submit on this one. And I just keep going. Now we have two fractions that we're going to simplify. So I have six over seven minus one half. Again, you cannot compare, add, or subtract fractions unless they have the same denominator. And I can see that seven and two have a um, a common multiple of fourteen. But I'd have to multiply seven by two to get fourteen, so my numerator would change to twelve. And I would have to multiply this by seven to get fourteen, so my numerator changes to seven. So now, really what it is, is twelve minus seven, which is five. I keep my denominator, five over fourteen. And I'm gonna type it in just like that, because five divided by fourteen cannot be simplified any more than what it already is. See here. Same thing, except this time, since five over six is negative and three over seven is negative, this time I know that I'm really going to add these fractions. Okay, but again, I still can't add them because the denominators are not the same. So six and seven have a common multiple of forty-two. But I had to multiply six by seven to get forty-two, so my numerator is gonna change to thirty-five. Had to multiply seven by six to get forty-two, so my numerator is gonna be eighteen. Again, I have negative thirty-five minus eighteen, which means I'm not going to subtract these, I'm really going to add them. So I get ten, eleven, thirteen, fifty-three. So I'm gonna get a negative fifty-three over forty-two. And then, I cannot simplify this because fifty-three is prime. There is no number that goes into fifty-three and forty-two. Okay. Erase. Alrighty. So I have, um, this time I'm dividing fractions. So I have a negative divided by a negative, so again, if I go back here, I know that a negative divided by a negative is a positive, so I know my answer is gonna be positive something. Now, I'm dividing fractions, so dividing fractions really is the same thing as mul- as multiplying by the reciprocal. So I'm gonna do twelve divided by thirteen times five over four. Cuz I'm gonna skip the first one and flip the second one and change it to multiplication. So I call it the skip, the flip, and then the multiply. So once you're here, you can simplify here, or you can multiply straight across. I always find it easier to simplify. So twelve and four can be simplified, four goes into four once, four goes into twelve three times. So now I'm just gonna do three times five, which is fifteen, and thirteen times one, which is thirteen. And just because it's improper, doesn't mean it's not simplified. This is in fact, still very much simplified. And it's positive, so I don't have to write a symbol at all. And I'm gonna hit submit. And I'm still going, okay? Some order of operations with fractions, again, one thing at a time. I see I have addition and multiplication, so I'm gonna deal with that first. So I'm gonna get five over six plus seven over eight. And again, I cannot add or subtract fractions unless the denominator is the same, so I have six and eight that have a common multiple of forty-eight. I had to multiply six by eight to get forty-eight, so my numerator changes to forty. Had to multiply eight by six to get forty-eight, so my numerator changes to forty-two. Here, I'm going to get eighty-two over forty-eight. This is not simplified, and it's very obvious because they're even, so I know at the very least, they're divisible by two. Um, so I'll just start with that, I'll say, okay, let's just divide them both by two. Two goes into eighty-two, how many times? Forty-one times. Two goes into forty-eight, twenty-four times. Uh, forty-one is one of those numbers, it's prime, there's nothing that can be multiplied to get forty-one except for forty-one times one. So I'm gonna type this improper, yet simplified fraction into my answer here. Submit. Erase. Okay, uh, same thing, more fractions, more order of operations, that doesn't matter, we're gonna just follow the same rules we've been following. Order of operation tells me to deal with this first. Two over three squared is exactly what it sounds like, two over three times two over three, which is four over nine. So I have seven thirds minus four over nine, again, that minus sign was not part of the exponent. I cannot add or subtract unless my denominators match. And what is my denominator gonna be this time? What is my denominator gonna be this time? That's right, it's gonna be nine, very good. This one's already nine, so nothing changed there. But I had to multiply three by three, so my numerator changes to twenty-one. So now it's twenty-one minus four over nine. And what is twenty-one minus four? It is seventeen over nine. And that is simplified, cuz seventeen is also prime. Simplify, erase. Okay. Again, still order of operations. I have negative five over six minus three fourths plus one third. I'm gonna do the parentheses first. The common denominator between four and three is twelve. So that means that my numerator changed to nine here and four here. So I have nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. So I have negative five over six minus thirteen over twelve, okay? And now, I'm going to have negative five over six minus thirteen over twelve. These guys have the same sign, so I'm gonna add these, but I can't add them until my denominators match. That by two, that's by two, so I get ten there, that didn't change. So I'm actually gonna get negative twenty-three divided by twelve. Negative twenty-three divided by twelve, and again, I like to use parentheses just to make sure. I'm gonna clear all my drawings. See how many more fractions are there, that's twenty-nine. Okay. Let's go back to twenty-nine. I think I might just go ahead and do the whole thing, since I'm almost done anyway. Um, order of operations again. I'm gonna still do what's in the parentheses first. And again, this one is negative, this one is positive, so I'm in fact going to subtract these. But I still need them to have a common denominator. And this had to get multiplied by three to get fifteen, so that changes. This had to get multiplied by five to get fifteen, so that changes. And again, since I have a negative three plus seven, going to subtract and get a positive seven over fifteen. So now I have negative two over nine minus seven over fifteen. Okay, and this minus sign came from right here, because my answer was positive, so that was fine. So again, I'm, I'm still in a situation where the denominators need to match, even though I'm going to add these eventually, because these do have the same sign, they are both negative fractions. So I'm gonna use forty-five as my common denominator. This had to get multiplied by five, which changes it to ten. This had to get multiplied by three, which changes this to twenty-one. Same sign, so I get a bigger negative number of negative thirty-one over forty-five. And submit, and I didn't use a parentheses there, but let's see if uh, it gives me any issues, what number was that? So we wanna make sure we go back to number twenty-one and twenty-nine. Okay. Let's do number thirty. Number thirty is when we start getting into the algebra. This is where you need to distribute, two times x is two x, two times ten is twenty. Negative five times x is negative five x. And negative five times negative eight is a positive forty. Then it's a matter of combining like terms, things that match. I got two x and negative five x is gonna give me a negative three x. Twenty plus forty is gonna give me sixty. So I'm gonna go ahead and type that in, I have negative three x plus sixty. Review it, looks good, submit. Erase. Thirty-one. This time I am solving a one-step equation. So I'm just gonna write it over here, so you can see what happens. My goal here is to get the variable all by itself, which means I gotta get rid of negative nine. The only way to get rid of negative nine is to do its opposite. And since it's an equation, that means the equal sign is like my left side and my right side, I have to treat both sides the same. Since I added nine on the right side, I also have to add nine on the left side. Which is gonna give me a twenty-seven equals x, or x equals twenty-seven, they are the same. So I'm gonna come over here and type in that, twenty-seven, submit. Clear. Now we have a two-step equation. Negative one equals three x plus eight. Again, your goal here is to get the variable, this guy right here, all by himself. Right now, he's married or being multiplied by three, so we'll deal with the three last. I'm gonna get rid of this eight first by doing its opposite on both sides, right? On the left side and the right side, I subtracted eight. So I get a negative nine equals three x here. And again, I'm not finished until my variable is all alone. And the only way to get it alone is to divide by three, because three and x are being multiplied. The opposite of multiplication is division. So I divide by three, again, treat both sides the same. Since I divided by three on the right, I also have to divide by three on the left, which means I get negative three equals x, which is the same thing as x equals negative three. These are the exact same thing. Come over here, I'll write negative three. Okay. Erase. Almost done here, only got a few more. Evaluate. Evaluate means nothing more than plug it in. So here it tells me w is negative three. So I'm literally, instead of nega- instead of w, I'm gonna write negative three. And again, notice I use parentheses. Three is being multiplied by w, so three is being multiplied by negative three. Here, five is being multiplied by p, so really, five is being multiplied by negative five. So I get a negative nine over a negative twenty-five. A negative divided by negative is a positive number. And twenty-five and nine do not have any common factors that I can simplify by. So I'm just gonna write nine divided by twenty-five. Submit. Clear. How you guys doing so far? Okay, good. So hopefully I'm getting the whole thing recorded, you guys have a couple days to look over it before you go take the real thing. Okay, here it says to find the perimeter of a rectangle, so I always like to draw my shape. You can use the formula, perimeter equals twice the length plus twice the width, which is the same thing. It's just adding all four sides together. If the length is fourteen and the width is nine, find the perimeter. So again, I can, I can go ahead and plug this stuff in. Perimeter equals two times the length, which is fourteen, plus two times the width, which is nine. Twenty-eight plus eighteen, p equals twenty plus ten is thirty. Eight and eight is sixteen, so p equals forty-six. That's using a formula, or I could've just went fourteen plus fourteen plus nine plus nine. Same kinda deal, I still would get twenty-eight plus eighteen, which would still give me forty-six. So whatever floats your boat, if you wanna use the shape or you wanna use the formula, that's completely up to you. But they are the same, just wanted you to see the relationship between the two. Okay, Christina is three inches taller than Donald. So you got Christina and you got Donald. And Christina is three inches taller than Donald. If we let x represent Donald, so instead of writing the word Donald, I'm gonna use x. So really Christina is three plus x. Write an algebraic expression for Christina's height. Christina is three inches more than Donald, and Donald is this x right here. So, three plus x is fine, I'm gonna go ahead and write x plus three, they are the same. Review it. Yeah, it looks good, submit, erase. Okay, thirty-six. Okay, here, I need to read that. Justin and Colin, I need my pen back. Justin and Colin were putting up some fencing across their ranch. They know that for every eighty-four feet of fencing, they will need seven posts. Which of the following proportions, which of the following proportions is set up correctly to find the number of posts that you will need to do a hundred and thirty-two feet of fencing? Okay, so here what I did was I literally set up these two ratios as I was reading. It gave me the first scenario, which was eighty-four feet of fencing for seven posts. So for every eighty-four feet, I need seven posts. So to be consistent, when I come over here, I'm gonna make sure that I put posts in the denominator and the fencing in the numerator, just like I had the fencing in the numerator here and the posts in the denominator. So it's saying find the number of posts. So for posts in the denominator, since I don't know what it is, I use a variable. Okay? And then it tells me the number, the feet of fencing, which goes in the numerator. So this proportion, which is two fractions, will give me my answer. It doesn't actually want me to solve it. It just wants me to find it. So I can see, I'm gonna look for eighty-four over seven. I can see one here. But then when I look at the other fraction, it's, it has x over thirty-two. I wanna look for the one that when I cross-multiplying, I get eighty-four times x and seven times one thirty-two. So let's see which one has eighty-four times x. Here's eighty-four times x and seven times one thirty-two. So this, so even though it looks different, it is actually an equivalent version. You can write this proportion four different ways and it'd still be the same thing. This was the most straightforward way, but when I went to look at my choices, I didn't see it exactly how I wrote it. So I had to look for the one that gave me the same cross-multiplication. Okay, so don't be fooled by that one. Don't think that you're wrong because you don't see your answer the exact way you have it written. Look for the alternate version, okay? This is also a proportion. So Savannah jogs five miles in two hours. How many hours? Hours is at the bottom and it's asking me how many, which means I don't know, so I use a variable. Will it take for fifteen miles? Now this time I am actually gonna solve it. I, I put the m and the h mainly just so you know where to put what, but really this is what I'm doing. Five times x is five x. Fifteen times two is thirty. When I get x by itself, I get x is six. So since x down here represented hours, I know that it's gonna be six hours. Yeah, they already wrote the word hour, so I'm only gonna type in the number six. Erase. Almost done here, guys. Three more. Find the area of a square with the, with thirteen centimeters. So square means all the sides are the same. Area is the length times the width, so in fact I'm doing thirteen times thirteen. And again, I'm not using a calculator, so wanna make sure you can do it on paper. So my area is gonna be a hundred and sixty-nine square centimeters. They already wrote the square centimeters. So I'm just gonna type in the one sixty-nine. You should definitely know how to find the area of a rectangle or a square, which is exactly what you see here. You will have two hours on the final or two and a half hours, but that's, as you can see, that's more than enough time. I'm getting through the final in just one hour. So you guys will have more than enough time to work on the final. I wouldn't even worry about the time if I was you. Cuz it's not gonna shut off or anything. It's just telling you, you know, you're taking too long. Okay? So, so far you saw, um, the area and the perimeter formula, but again, do you really need a perimeter formula cuz it's just adding up the sides no matter what the shape is? You should know the formula for area of a rectangle and a square though, okay? Okay, let's erase this. Yeah. Oh wait, I didn't submit my answer, did I? Nope, I didn't submit. There we go. Let's do thirty-nine. Okay, Jacqueline made a circle in the snow. The circle had a radius of seven meters. What is the area of the circle she made in the snow? Use three fourteen four pi. Okay, so this one is your it's not the circumference. I don't even think this question is supposed to be on here. Oh, but this is the review. That's right. You guys are not gonna see um, area of a circle on the real final, but we're gonna do it anyway. Okay. So we are going to do area of a circle is pi r squared. Area equals pi r squared. And it is telling us to um, use three-point-one-four for the symbol pi, so my area is gonna be three-point-one-four r squared, and r is seven, so it's gonna be seven squared. So I have a equals three-point-one-four times what? What is seven squared? What is seven squared? Forty-nine. Very good. Forty-nine. And then forty-nine times three-point-one-four is one fifty-three point eighty-six. And it already has the square meters, so I just am worried about typing in the answer. So one fifty-three point eighty-six. You know, I, I may, I may be miss- I may be wrong. I'm gonna have to check. So make sure you know this area equals pi r squared, just in case. Um, but it will, if it is, it's only gonna be this one question. Okay? Um, oh, let's hit submit. Let's erase. And yeah, it was. It's in your book too. It's in chapter ten, I believe. Um, I just didn't remember. Okay. So we wanna convert our measurements. So we wanna do eleven point forty-three inches equals how many feet? Now this is obviously going to be, um, a decimal because we know that twelve inches makes one foot, right? Okay? So this is not gonna be right? It's like almost a foot. So whatever our answer is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be like point something, and it's telling me to round to do two decimal places. So the way I would, um, attack this is I'd say, well, this is eleven point forty-three out of twelve, cuz one foot is twelve inches, right? One foot is twelve inches, and I only have eleven point forty-three of those inches. And then I would actually do this division, eleven point forty-three divided by twelve. And again, we'll check to make sure it's accepting my answers the way I'm writing it. So I'm, I'm saying do this, eleven point forty-three divided by twelve. And we are gonna get a really long decimal. It's gonna be point five one nine five four five, or it starts repeating after a while. Round decimal answer to the, to two places. So my two places would be fifty-one, but this nine here is big enough to make that one a two, so I'm gonna put point fifty-two. That doesn't sound right, though. Does it? Eleven out of, it should be bigger than that, no? Right? Shouldn't it be bigger than that? Cuz this is almost a whole foot. Let me check. Oh. I knew I had something wrong. I'm sorry, guys. It's not point five. It's point nine five two five. Okay, so two decimal places would be here. This two does not change that, so I'm actually gonna write point ninety-five. I knew something wasn't right. Point ninety-five. Submit. Okay. So now, let's see if it liked my answers. Yep, it did. Okay. So remember I talked about twenty-one and twenty-nine? We did them correctly. It did like the way we rounded. I just wanted to make sure. So, um, Wednesday I'll go over any final questions you guys may have. Um, it looks like you should be I, I'm gonna look at everyone's grades today. I haven't updated the lab hours in a couple weeks, so I need to get a report from the depot to, um, to update those lab hours. I'm gonna look at grades today, um, lab hours and, you know, up, do some updating in the gradebook. So maybe after I update it, then you ask me. It worked. Well, I have records of the previous hours, but I haven't looked at them in a couple weeks. Yeah, I can do number eight D. Uh, Tracy, email me about your hours so I can look into it for you. Okay? And Maritza, you want me to do eight D? So let me go to eight D. Okay. I have, it's been at least two weeks since I've updated those lab hours, so I, I'm sure that when I pull the report, it will, it will, um, show the new stuff. Okay? All right, eight D. Okay, I'll, I'll shoot me an email Tracy to remind me, but, um, I'm sure it's fine. Okay. Maritza, so eight D. Okay, I'll be here tomorrow too. I find a completely simplified expression for the area shaded in this rectangle. So normally when they give us area problems, they say the length is thirteen and the width is five, and we multiply them. This time it gave us expressions. No different. We're still gonna multiply them. But maybe you're having trouble seeing how do you multiply expressions. So I'm gonna take my length, which is five x plus four, and I'm gonna multiply it times my width, which is five x minus four. Okay? And really what you're doing here is you're foiling. You have two terms being multiplied by two terms. So what you get here, five x times five x is twenty-five x squared. Five x times negative four is negative twenty x. Four times five x is positive twenty x. And then four times negative four is negative sixteen. These actually cancel cuz it's a plus and a minus of the same exact thing. And you have twenty-five x squared minus sixteen. And that's it. And I'll go ahead and type that in. Twenty-five x divided by squared minus sixteen. I'll preview it. That looks good. And submit. There we go. Did you guys have any other problems you wanted me to go over before I go to my next meeting? You see what you did wrong? Great. Great, great, awesome. So, um, if you can't join me on Wednesday, but you have more questions you want me to go over, just make sure you email them to me, then, you know, you can tell me just like you did just now, section eight D, number one, or competency check three, whatever, or go back to the review. Um, I'm going to put this recording up on YouTube in a couple minutes. And, um, then everyone will be able to watch it after the fact. Okay? Any more questions, guys? Okay, great. Have a nice one.